I'd like to call the Thursday, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Franklin City School Board to order. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that the school board, having been in closed session pursuant to a proper motion, come out of the closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you. Do we have a motion for certification?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the whoever's doing that, I need, I have to be able to read it. And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, and now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the school, the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Again, we'd like to welcome you all. Thank you for coming. Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll say the mayor and city councilman, Ray Smith, and the audience, thank you too for coming. We appreciate it. Do we have any motions for closed session?
I'm moved to approve the personnel agenda as presented in closed session.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the personnel agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you. Roll call. Ms. Bondser.
Mr. Holt?
Present.
Ms. Council?
Present.
Mr. McCreary?
Present.
Ms. Howell?
Present.
Ms. Moon?
Present.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Citizens, Tom, do we have anyone signed up? Could I have the list, please? Thank you. First, Mr. Grove.
Hello, Board. Before I start, there's what I wanted to say. I'd love to know that this weekend, there is a robotics competition in Richmond at Churchwood High School. The Blackwater Robotics Team is going to be competing in our first competition of the season. We have a built, well, they have built a phenomenal robot. Let me just state that we are going to be in the fifth or sixth spot based on the data we've already watched for the current season, and we would love for you to come and cheer them on. It is going to start kickoff is at ten thirty on Saturday, goes to seven o'clock, and then we come back the next day to finish up. And then after lunch, we have finals, and we, one hundred percent, unless something happens to our robot, we will be in that final. So, please come if you can. They would, we would love to have you there.
Thank you.
But now on to my other thing. Good evening, members of the school board, central office, teachers, parents, and members of the community. I am a teacher, a member of the community, and a parent of two boys at S.P. Morton. I see firsthand what they are learning and what they are not. As a teacher, I know what I am teaching in my classroom every day and working to try to teach my students. I love this town, and I love this community, as I've been a member here for fifteen years. Tonight, I'm here as an employee of Franklin City Public Schools to vent frustration at recent changes. As I know you are made aware of last school board meeting, the science department did not make a great showing at the first round of S.O.L. testing. One member of the school board, two weeks ago, asked how not teaching science and history in the elementary, middle school levels may have affected the results of the test. And I'm not sure if you realize the extent of that decision years ago, but I will tell you, it was a lot. I am the first real science teacher that my students have ever had. I have been told by several parents that these current eighth grade students had a long-term sub for two years in fourth and fifth grade in the elementary school. COVID then shut everything else down in fifth grade. Many of these students tell me that they didn't have science in sixth grade. I don't know whether because they just didn't go to class, or because there wasn't a teacher. I have heard both excuses. I do know for a fact that their seventh grade teacher was pulled from them to teach eighth grade science, and I've been told that they didn't have a science teacher after that. I know that I'm in a unique position from anyone else in the whole district. The science eight test tests students on three years of science, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. This whole situation leads me to teach and reteach three years of science in approximately four and a half months. I did my best. Staying after school for those who'd come, doing Friday S.O.L. remediation and enrichment days for the students who would show up, wasn't enough? For many, it wasn't. For that, I'm truly sorry. It was not because I did not try to teach them, but the mountain was just too big for some of these students. I know that my students learned. I know that they had growth. I see it. Unfortunately, you can't pass a science test on growth. You can't pass science on learning just one year of material. So, I failed. On paper, I failed. As a teacher, I know I didn't. My kids learned science. I made connections with my students. They know I care and love them. It, I was hard on some, or it was hard on some because I had high expectations, and I held them accountable. When they would tell me they were no good at science, I always responded with yet. You are not good at science, yet, but you will be. Just give me more time. I left a wonderful teaching job in Chesapeake to come back to Franklin because I trust and believe in the leadership of Franklin High School. I also did so so that I could have two hours of drive time back with my own kids. I have lost that with the recent changes that have been made. In the span of three weeks, we have had some drastic changes which are overwhelming as a teacher. It is not to say that some of these changes weren't needed. I agree that many, and in fact, most were. The support and the guidance wasn't there before, and now we are overwhelmed. The changes can't be made overnight. Teachers need support. I am not a new teacher. I have been teaching for twenty years in Virginia and New York State. I am still struggling this year. I have not been provided with resources to help me and my students be better. If I don't have that support or what I need, how can a new or newer teacher expect to do well? The new lesson plan is daunting and time-consuming. I am one person with two classes, so I have to complete this plan twice. And I'm not the only teacher at FHS that has multiple preps. I agree that lesson planning is necessary. I did it every week, but not to the extent that is being asked of us now. This lesson plan takes away from time needed in my class. It took away the time that I was supposed to be grading labs, tests, quizzes for my students for their interim reports. They don't get immediate feedback like they used to. I have lost countless hours for my own family. I spend hours and lots of money on teachers pay teachers trying to find the right activities that fit in this five E lesson plan. I can't afford to keep doing that. I know that another teacher has already asked the district to purchase programs that would fit this. Kessler Science is a wonderful example, but it's not the only one of resources that could be provided to help teach lessons. Many of you are probably thinking that we already have something that fits this bill, but as a science teacher, I do not have access. Or if I do have access, I don't have the training. I think, fingers crossed, that I may finally have access to the eighth grade textbook tomorrow. I have been asking for access since September. I will still have no clue how to use it, though, with my students. I have bins of supplies that were dumped in my classroom for labs and activities. The problem is, I don't have the labs or activities that correspond with it. So, I have been asking since September for help with that. These are activities that would be helpful for our students. I recently was trained with Go Guardian, and that was just because another teacher who knew it, knew it showed me. I didn't even know we had it. I learned, though, that it only works on laptops and not in the computer lab. That would have been helpful when I did benchmark testing yesterday. We have Safari Montage, but nobody seems to know how it works or how to use it. EV Media would be great, a wonderful resource, but teachers need to be trained. The list goes on. Teachers need to be supported and not giving more work than what is beneficial. New teachers need support, resources, and training. Veteran teachers need support, resources, and training. I'm speaking out of frustration on behalf of my fellow teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Ross?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to give you a little introduction. I'm a mother of seven children here in Franklin. I have a recent high school graduate as of last year. I have a ninth grader at the Franklin High School, and I currently have three school-aged children that are in, in the elementary school. The three children in the elementary school are all legally disabled children on the autism spectrum. Two of my boys have IEPs. They have global academic delays. I had no problem getting them IEPs when we transitioned here from Portsmouth. However, my daughter, who is a first grader, I cannot get an IEP for. She is currently on medication. When she has her meds in her system, she falls asleep in class. It is stated that she does not have any academic issues, and I agree, she does not. She has behavioral issues. Her autism presents in a behavioral aspect. I have given all of the medical documentation to the school. I have done several, not one, but several student evaluations, and they have all been denied for an IEP and a 504. However, if I send Autumn to school without medication, she is going to be sent home, as I have seen through her pre-K and kindergarten years. At this point, I do not feel it's fair to the other students, as well as the teacher, to send her to school without medication, but at the same time, that's what's preventing us from being able to get any kind of accommodations. At this point, I have days where I can't even get Autumn to go to school because of her behaviors. So, Autumn has several attendance issues because of this, but it goes back to, nobody sees her behaviors at school because I had to put her on medication from the previous years. There's documentation of all the calls. I recently received a call from her teacher stating her behaviors as far as not wanting to go into class. Once her medication kicked in, she was good to go. I don't know what to do at this point. I have a child that either goes to class and falls asleep, and I'm constantly called by the teacher because Autumn is asleep in class. Obviously, that's an issue. Or I send her without medication, and the teacher is currently struggling. Another issue that I have, I have a kindergartner there. He's five. He kept telling me that his teacher was yelling and screaming. A five-year-old? Okay. I kind of blew it off, I'll be honest. However, it has consistently been an issue for the past few months, to the point that now he does not want to go to school. He tells me he is scared of his teacher. I have brought this up with the principal. We have come to a resolution as far as removing him from the class for half of a day. However, I think at this point, it needs to be brought to the school board's attention that you may have a teacher there that is not appropriate for disabled children, or children in general. This has been something that has been confirmed by other teachers, and the principal is aware of it. I think somebody needs to take a further look into this situation, and I would like somebody to contact me as far as an IEP plan. I have been offered by Ms. Phillips to come and sit with her. However, I am the primary financial provider for my family. My days start early as one a.m. and end at six p.m. Well out of your windows. I need somebody to either give me a phone call or meet with me outside of the timeframes so that we can discuss this issue, because I cannot afford to take off from work. I am a store manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone will be in touch with you tomorrow. Moving on to our consent agenda, budget adjustment. Dr. Carter?
Yes, thank you. Can you scroll down a little bit, Ms. Bondser? I'm asking the, the board to approve the state revenue increase of one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars to be added to our Fund Ten budget. So, you see the breakdown here of the increase of instructional expense, the increase of admin expense, the increase of transportation expense, increase of operation expense, and increase of enterprise expense. So, I'm asking the board tonight to approve the one point six, one, one, one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven, thirty, thirty-five dollars to be added to the general fund.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Can you, I'm new to this, so can you just explain what state revenue means? Like, is it coming from the state?
Yeah, it's, it's coming, it's coming from the, it's coming from the, the state, and it's based on our annual, our ADM, our annual daily membership. And so, this is extra revenue that came in, in June of two thousand twenty-two, and it's just been brought up at this point to be added to the budget.
So, it's not coming from the locale? It's coming from the state?
It's coming from the state, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And this budget adjustment just alerts the city of our change to accept that money, and then how we're gonna spend it?
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the request for a budget adjustment.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Three point two, Dr. Carter.
All right. So, this is a revenue in, increase from our Title One. This is to pay for the salaries for the enrichment Fridays for the teachers. And so, I'm just letting you know that we are making adjustments, and this is the increase for enrichment Fridays for the, for payment for teachers.
Do we have a motion to approve that budget adjustment? For Title One?
I move to accept this notice of budget adjustment for the Title One.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it for.
Minutes for approval, February sixteenth. This will be our second reading. We should have had a chance to look at those. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the meeting minutes, excuse me, accept the minutes from the meeting of February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to accept the February sixteenth minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you. The March second minutes are there for our first reading. We'll approve those at our next session. Human Resources, Dr. White.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board members, and community. Again, good evening. So, tonight, I'm going to present to you our staffing as of February two thousand twenty-three. So, when we're looking at, we're going to be comparing December two thousand twenty-two to our February two thousand twenty-three. So, if you notice at S.P. Morton, we did add one position. So, we went from thirty-six to thirty-seven positions. Currently, we have five vacancies, and it's fourteen percent. At J.P. King, we have seventeen positions, five vacancies, twenty-nine percent. FHS, thirty-five positions with one vacancy at three percent. So, as you can see, there was a change between December two thousand twenty-two and February two thousand twenty-three at the elementary school and at the middle school. All right. So, now we're gonna take a look at our licensure, our staff licensure, how many of our teachers have renewable license, to include postgraduate collegiate, international, and technical professional. Okay? So, currently, for postgraduate, twenty-six point eight percent of our teachers have postgraduate license, twenty-six point eight percent, twenty-six point eight percent have a collegiate license. We do have one point nine percent with an international, and three point seven with a technical professional. For provisional, thirty-three point four percent of our teachers have provisional license, and seven point four are non-licensed, meaning that they are long-term subs. So, currently, we have about forty percent of our staff that are either provisional or long-term sub. So, you can clearly see the breakdown with the renewable versus non-renewable. Sixty percent of our staff have renewable license, where thirty-three percent have a provisional license, and the other seven percent are not licensed. They're long-term substitutes. Okay? Any questions thus far? All right. So, when we take a look at our provisional licensed teachers and our non-licensed, you come, come up with a total of about forty-four. So, of that forty-four, thirty-seven of those staff members are in our Grow Your Own program. And so, we are working to get those people with a renewable license, or for our non-licensed, though they will receive a provisional license. So, again, when we're looking at those that have provisional or non-renewable, or no license at all, about eighty-four percent of them are actually in our Grow Your Own program, so they're working towards a license.
Let me ask you, how long, what's the timeframe be for that?
So.
In the Grow Your Own?
So, if they already have, if they have a provisional license, they have about, it's fifteen credits that they have to get for a continuing license. They have to take their foundation classes for education. If they're starting out with a non-license, then it takes a lot longer. It can take up to three years. So, the state has it where we can request a waiver for provisional. So, if a person gets a provisional, and they don't complete in time, the superintendent has the authority to request a one-time waiver, and so that would give them an additional two years. So, for a total of about five years for provisional.
How do you qualify for a provisional?
So, you have to have a bachelor's degree, and then there are some core classes that you have to have. And what they are, are pretty, very similar to what you would take in undergrad, your first two years. So, your math, your science, those kinds of things. And so, depending on what type of provisional you're going for will determine how many of those classes you have to have. So, once you complete the, the core courses, then you can get a provisional, and you need to then start working on your educational classes.
So, what do you project, like, in another year with this Grow Your Own program?
So, when we're looking at our teachers that currently have provisionals, we are anticipating by the end of two thousand twenty-five, the bulk of them will have collegiate license. If you look, you'll notice that we only, we have really decreased the number of teachers that do not have a license, and we're actually, believe it or not, looking at hiring licensed teachers. We're at a place now where when we go out to recruit for this upcoming school year, we're going to be looking at hiring licensed teachers, because again, when you look, we, we are, I think that, what was it? What was the actual number? I know the percent says seven percent, but the actual numbers, we have eight non-licensed staff members. And so, we are very comfortable and feel assured that we will be able to replace them with either provisional or collegiate license.
Is there a even division of where those eight are, or is it focused more in one particular school?
The bulk of them are at the elementary school because they have the largest staff. Currently, we have one at the high school, and we have, I think we broke them down. So, your vacancies, when you're looking at the chart on the first page for the vacancies, those are not actual vacancies, meaning that there's no one sitting in a seat. That's where your non-licensed teachers are. And so, we just call it vacancy because we don't have a licensed teacher there. Any questions thus far?
One piece of good news on the chart, I thought, was that half of our licensed, fully licensed teachers have graduates degrees.
Yes.
And that's an excellent percentage.
Yes. Yes.
Also, Dr. Carter and Dr. White and the three principals are doing a lot of work with the provisional teachers, getting them fully trained. And so, there is a lot of progress in that. Thank you.
So, we do have a new teacher academy for our new teachers as a whole. The bulk of them are provisional, but we do have some that are collegiate. So, any new teacher, licensed, non-licensed, provisional, collegiate, they participate in our new teacher academy, and we meet twice a week after school. I'm sorry, I said twice a week. It's twice a month after school. Twice a week is a bit much.
When we have the, this teacher training or the Grow Your Own, is there a commitment from the teacher to the division?
Yes, there is a commitment. We partner with Paul D. Camp. We also partner with Phoenix University. And so, when we're paying the tuitions through our Title II grant, the commitment is that they stay with us for at least three years, and if they do not, then they have a prorated rate at which they must repay their tuition back to us. Yes. Any other questions? All right. All right. Thank you so much.
We will move on.
All right. Tonight, I'll also bring before the board our newest V S B A policy updates. And so, we have policy title for minutes, how we take our minutes, and the revision is for a legal reference update. We have evaluation of the superintendent, and the revision is for a policy update to reflect requirement of H.B. one nine zero four dash dash S.B. We have management of funds policy update, school activity funds policy revised to reflect content of legal references and legal references updated to correct typographical error. We have vandalism and its cross-reference updated to remove the reference to delete regulation J.F.C. dash R, Standards of Student Conduct. We have acceptable computer use, both for our staff and our students, and it's being revised. The policy and cross-reference updated, legal references updated, to reflect enactment of Virginia codes. And this one is going to require a review and some amendments. So, once you guys make a decision, I will then, if you would let me know, so that we can decide on the amendments that will be made for our division. Okay? so that we can decide on the amendments that will be made for our division, okay? Uh, policy, military leave and benefits is being revised for policy update to reflect amendment of Virginia Code forty-four dash nine-three by H.B. two-three-one. Policy title, we have proficient, uh, professional staff assignment and transfers. Policy updated, revision requires each school board to set a date by which the transfer request will occur. Um, professional staff assignments and transfers, the policy has been updated. Designations of staff, policy updated. School library media centers is a policy update. College and career readiness, legal reference updated. Alternative paths to attending standard units of credit, I'm sorry, attaining standard units of credit. And that's a policy and cross-reference update. And then lastly, we have on the last page, student fees, fines and charges, policy update. Education agency. I'm sorry, education, I need to put on glasses. Education agency relations goals. That's a cross-reference update to remove references to deleted policies. And then lastly, relations and educational accreditation agencies. Policy update to reflect contents and legal references. Any questions about the policy updates?
As the board knows, we've had a number of policies, actually dozens, and we're behind on approving them. And what we're trying to do is work with V.S.B.A. to give you a password so you can get into the policy and look at the detail rather than making a vote just on the title of the policy.
So with, I'm sorry, I'm-
Go ahead, Dr. White.
Within the um the agenda, you should have a link to the policies with the red lines-
Right.
And the actual policy, so you can see the changes that are being made to the policies.
So when it says policy update, then it's gonna actually be language that's been changed-
Yes.
As opposed to like references that have been modified or so forth?
Yes, and so when you pull up the red line, do you mind pulling up a red line? When you pull up the red line, you'll see the strike through so you can see what language is actually being changed.
And, and what you're doing also is that you're, you're condensing, you, you haven't given it all at once, right? You're kind of spreading them out for us, I think?
So, so what we're, what, what I think, what I understand that we're doing is we're giving them all to you and then you guys will give them back to us um bit by bit.
I think there are three batches. There was a really big batch.
It was huge, if I remember.
And then there were a couple of them, and then this is the latest one. So at some point, we'll look at all of them. We'll ask you to look at all of them and then we'll vote. But we want you to know what the detail and the changes are, so. It's gonna take a month to go through that.
Well, one of them was like ninety-eight pages long or something. The PDF was overwhelming.
Right. And most of them are laws that have changed that we have to approve, but we want to look at them.
So uh, this link that you provided, that has all the changes?
Yes, it has your red lines and it has the actual um corrected version.
Right, okay.
So the red line, the white line, you see the changes. And uh, feel free, you guys, to let me know if there, if there's another way you'd like to present me, for, for me to present these changes, to make it easier for you to. I'm already happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. White.
Alright, thank you.
Superintendent's report. Dr. Carter.
Mr. Smith, do you want me to present? Or do, or do you would like to present and I, and? Either or, sir. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and present and then if there are any follow-up questions. Alright. Alright, so I asked Mr. Smith to um take a look at what we had uh problems and, and uh capital improvements uh at Franklin High School. And so one of the major concerns that we, that we discovered is the Franklin High School water fountain upgrade. And you're looking at the water fountain grades. We, we are working with L.K. Water Fountain Systems. They're a bottle filter. Um, and then you have new water fountains that also will have been built within the uh water filter system. Remove one of the double-hang fountains and cover with stainless steel plate. Install a new water fountain with a bottle filter attachments. Recommended uh uh replacing first, uh near culinary arts. Uh, hall near cafeteria, both in cafeteria and the third, and the third hallway. Uh, current, current fountains are original to built and do not have cooled water. So the piping is so old that we, we don't have cool water uh at the high schools. Also have issues with drinking, spouts and drains uh do not function properly. Next slide, please. So you see the current uh conditions of the water fountains. They, they basically have not been in operation. And I believe they haven't been in operation for quite some time. Mr. Smith, how long would you say, or Mr. Phelps, how long would you say they have not been in operation? So the water fountains have been down for quite some time, as you can see. So we're, we're addressing so the students are able to, to have drinking water. Next slide. Alright, so this is the Franklin High School recommended water fountains that we're going to install. As you can see, it has a touchless option. And you, you, okay. Move on, next slide, Ms. Bonzer. This is kind of small, so don't strain your eyes, but it's really roughly about twenty-two thousand. I don't think we can blow it up. It's about twenty-two thousand, what's that, Mr. Smith? Twenty-two thousand?
Eight-eighty-seven.
Eight-eighty-seven, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holt. And uh, for that, we can, we can replace the water fountains. Now you're looking at the bathroom upgrades. You say, you see here where it says, look to, no hot water available at the sinks. And I don't think that's ever been available. It's never been available, so you can see that's a, a sanitation problem, sanitary problem. Uh, multiple sinks rusted and coming off the wall. Uh, you have your toilets and urinals are operational but need updating. Single-hand handle faucets, uh, once again, no hot water. Um, you see you have the toilet issues and base of, of, base of toilet bowls. So you have a problem uh with the bathrooms and the sinks. Next picture. It's not moving, Ms. Bonzer? I'm gonna press enter. Okay. So you see the continued photos of current restrooms and you see the urinals and you see the conditions of the toilet and the sink. Next slide. So the solution is uh convert current flush valves to touchless for more sanitary reasons. Replace rusty, faulty sinks, toilets, urinals as needed. Install on-demand single-point-of-use water heaters. Paint ceilings and above-wall tile as needed. Repair tile as needed. Repair upgrading lighting as needed. Install new metered faucets to save water consumption. Next slide. So you can see here that uh the average cost is around nine thousand seven hundred dollars per two uh sets of bathrooms. And uh, you see how it works after, we'll see how it works after completion. Uh, and the work will be done in-house to try to save money. And you can see an example of the new fixtures. Any questions?
I have a related question, but it's not exactly this, but you mentioned the lighting. Um, is uh, are, do we use fluorescent lights or? In the facility, in the, in the buildings? Or, I was just curious, like the newer LED, LED lighting, if, if there was any kind of savings? Is what kind?
We have majority of them. Yeah, most of the lights in the schools are fluorescent.
Fluorescent?
Yeah. Well, now when we replace them or redo some, we go to LED, of course. The current, most of the current ones are T-eights, fluorescent lighting.
I just, I was curious, that was any cost savings?
Yeah.
That will help us as we upgrade?
Yeah, it would. It would.
Okay.
Plus the longevity too. You don't have to change the bulbs or something, that kind of thing, so.
Correct. Right. How many um, how many sink, uh, excuse me, let me go back to the water fountains. How many water fountains does that cover, that cost?
I think one in each hallway?
Yeah, so currently, you can see the picture, there's two on each hallway. There's one on the first, the second, the third. And there's one by the office, which is a small one. But essentially, we're gonna put one new one. We're gonna blank one of them all, put one new. So that'll be one per hallway.
How mu, well, I don't know how many hallway, I haven't been in it.
There's three.
Three.
There's three.
Yeah, three hallways. Yeah, and there's two in the after years, really sparse.
I see. Does uh, does the plumbing, does it contribute to any of the problems we have?
Well, it's just the piping is just so old. I mean, there's, there's no uh, there, you can't pump in any hot water. And you can't pump in any cool water. So we're just, at this point, doing the best we can because the building's so old.
Right, right. Well, I guess one other question then on bathrooms, you, we're gonna do, you're gonna start with one set-
Right.
Of two, of two.
Yeah.
How many, how many total sets are there?
There's one on the first hall, the second hall, the third hall, so that's three. There's one on vacation, it's four. There's actually four double sets, boys and girls.
I see.
Here's a couple of teacher ones we can do also, but fairly start with the one by the gym, as the guy goes.
Right.
So originally, in the capital improvement plan to do a full modernization, it was three million dollars. That was the original. But we are trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can and just do exactly what we need. Um, it's not what we want, but, but we're just doing what we need for right now. Uh, so that uh we can stay within, once again, being, trying to be fiscally responsible. I'll just keep it that, I'll keep it in that statement.
But have a healthier school environment.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Because this has been going on for three years-
Right.
And hasn't been addressed.
So this will take some pressure off as we plan, we can plan better in the future.
Yes, 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 because if you're gonna spend three million dollars, you might wanna look at going in a different direction.
Right.
And so I, you know, I asked Mr. Smith and with Mr. Phelps, what, what can we do right now at minimal cost? But yet give an upgrade?
Yes. Thank you.
Next one, Ms. Bonzer, Boys and Girls Club? So I, the Boys and Girls Club, I believe to my knowledge, has been with us for seven years. And we never had a memorandum of understanding. So for legal purposes, I sat well down with the director and said, let's please put together for first read a memorandum of understanding between Franklin City Public Schools and the Boys and Girls Club. So this is what I'm, I present to the board tonight as a first read uh for a memorandum of understanding for the Boys and Girls Club and Franklin City Public Schools. Slide down, Ms. Bonzer. So it just basically is going through background, purpose, roles and responsibilities. Slide down, Ms. Bonzer, please. And so you can see it's still loading, but I'm not expecting you to prove, approve today. But it's just for a first read and I just wanted to bring it to your attention um for legal purposes, to bring forth a memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club.
Which, which facility is this in, or is it all three schools?
It's pri, it's primary at the elementary school, is where they're housed. But uh, you know, they serve us all.
Is this also at the, the King, yeah, the Martin Luther King Center?
Uh, no, that's not a, this is a, this, right, this is at just, I don't know.
This is just at the schools?
These are at the schools, yes. This is just at the schools because y, you know, as I was, you know, I'm doing analysis across the entire district of everything that we have. I realized that we didn't have a memorandum of understanding or a contract with the Boys and Girls Club. And they've been here seven years.
This is great.
Alright, Ms. Bonzer, it's loading, so I guess we can, we can come out of it. They, as I move on to our next item. So our SPM partnership, I see Dr. Tindall is here. Dr. Tindall? I don't wanna steal your shine. Would you like to speak to this?
Good evening, Chairman Holt, Board Members. Uh, we have several partnerships. We partnered recently with the AKA Sorority. Uh, and I am friends with the president of the local chapter of um, I think it's Alpha-
Kappa, Alpha, Psi.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was Alpha, anyway. So I approached him and said, we know this is a Franklin Southampton chapter. Would you all be interested in partnering with the schools to help us out in, in a variety of ways? And so uh, he presented it to the fraternity and they said, yes, absolutely, we would love to do it, but we need a better understanding of what will be expected. And so he and I sat down and came up with three different ways that they could help us out. And because a lot of their members work and we don't have specific days set up for this, so you'll notice it says once a month and those days will fluctuate based on our needs, what we have going on on those certain months and when their fraternity members can be off of work or be available for us. So the first one would be to meet with selected students during lunches and that would be for our students in grades three through five. They would be selected by the administration with the help of the teachers and the counselors. Uh, just not as a formal mentorship program, but as a, these are kind of the kids that we feel like need some extra support or need some extra guidance. Depending on who they have at home supporting them or who they have in the community supporting them, that we feel like they have that need for an extra person. Uh, and we even talked about setting up a table on the stage or separate from the rest of the tables that they could sit. This would be a, we wanna earn this opportunity to meet with these, these gentlemen during lunch. The second one would be for grades one and two, potentially kindergarten, but we wanted to stick with one and two for right now uh as listeners, because the students need practice reading out loud. And so they have stuffed animals that they read to in the classroom or they have the, the, their little plastic pieces look like a phone and they read, they can hear it amplified in their ear. But it would be nice if they had a, another person that they could read to. And so uh, some of the, the fraternity members have said that they will come in and meet with the students to just be listeners as they practice reading out loud. Uh, and then the last one would be just coming and greeting the students when they're coming in, either from parent pickup or off of the buses, start their day, kind of cheer them on, shake their hands, that kind of thing. So um, this has been approved by the chapter members and then we brought it uh to Dr. Carter for you all's approval. Any questions?
I think this is great to have more community involvement.
And they also support the, the AKAs when they do things, like when they had the Martin Luther King Day, when we had the kickoff, some of their members were there as well to, to support, so it was kind of a natural, you wanna put something formal in place with us, so.
That's great.
Alright, so I guess I'm asking the board to make a motion to uh bring on a new community partner into the fold, uh, if you prepare tonight.
Do we have such a motion?
I move to accept the partnership of S.P. Board in Elementary School and Kappa, Alpha, Pi Fraternity Partnership.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Tindall. Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Alright, that concludes my report for tonight.
Alright, business by school board members. Ms. Bonzer has listed a few things coming up. Many of us attend workshops and there are excellent webinars, school laws conference is always good. I know a couple people are going to the budget. I know a couple people are going to the budget workshop. Any board members have comments?
Um, Mr. Holt, you had asked that I discuss briefly the, the S B A university for board members?
Yes.
So the V S B A has a program where board members can earn level, levels of certification by taking different coursework. And I have completed the two levels that they offer, and I just wanted to share that it's super helpful. I've learned a lot, it's been, um, really valuable to understand more about my role as a school board member, our relationship with the superintendent, with the community at large, how to be a more effective board member, how to ask the right kind of questions. And it's just part of my learning process as I'm trying to become a more effective board member. So I encourage other board members to look into it, it's, um, it's super valuable, so.
That's excellent, I think you're the first board member that's ever done that before, so thank you for leading the way.
Thank you.
Anything else? Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're adjourned, thank you all.